Next on the public agenda, we have Mr. Jelani Bob.
How's everybody doing?
All right.
All right. I'm here today to introduce to you all our proposal for the entertainment district. We're here on behalf of the Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative. Get this right, Bob.
Okay.
Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative Incorporated, which is a nonprofit founded by Mr. Shawn Pearson here. I am the president of it. We incorporated last month. And mainly our focus, we're a statewide nonprofit founded for the express purpose of preventing all types of violence, especially those involving weapons. We also want to bring awareness about gun use, safety, and storage. Guns don't kill people, people kill people. As studies show, most violence occurs in areas that are poverty stricken and lacks proper extracurricular activity, which keeps most people idle. And we all know the dangers of an idle mind. Since MDC Fire does not possess the necessary means to employ everyone, we can offer the alternative as some type of supplement for idleness. We here at MDC Fire Organization believe that through events and entertainment, we can simultaneously reduce and prevent violent crimes also and also help boost our local economy. To that end, we have detailed proposal that with proper execution will live up to all that is proposed. And I'm gonna let our founder, Mr. Pearson, just give you a small background about Mississippi Delta Cease Fire and things that we have going on there.
How y'all doing? I formed Mississippi Delta Cease Fire back here like six, seven years ago. It was close to me because I had lost a lot of young people. I work close with young people. I've been working with young people here in Greenwood and the Ettabena area for over 20 years, right there 20 years. And through my contacts and my rapport that I have with the community and young people and adults alike. Yeah, and adults alike, I sat down and brainstormed on ways that I think that coming from a normal citizen standpoint that I can be effective as far as bringing awareness to our crime here in Greenwood. My focus would be on intervention and prevention. We would bring awareness to it just as we're aware of. We have our cancer awareness, we have cystic fibrosis, we have several campaigns that bring people awareness about a particular problem. The Cease Fire Initiative has worked in other cities, mainly major cities. This is the first one of its kind in the Mississippi Delta. And my vision is to have the program adopted and mentored by leadership and critiqued as well. Anything that we state here today as far as our intentions, they are, we welcome your positive critiqueness and we would like to see this initiative followed through. As you know, we have, you know, we have a high unemployment just as the Senator stated. Everybody wants jobs and we want industry here. We want to work hand in hand with all other agencies to help do our part in the community to help these things come about. And if we're showing a genuine effort, a strong effort, activity with a lot of progress, I think that the Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative could be very effective here in our town and be the pilot program so that we can go in other cities in the Mississippi Delta and do the same thing. Basically, we want to coincide and help any activities that are going on. My vision is to have volunteers from the community. Each ward will have point persons. I'm already heavily involved with the youth and their parents. So there's a lot of people that wants to get involved and everybody who goes out doesn't. And if we're talking about entertainment, we want to do something to help make it safe. In cooperation, I gave Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative to Mr. Chief Purnell years ago. And I've also let the mayor read it. And I have a lot of citizens out there in Greenwood that are behind it. Business owners, I'm a former business owner myself. I own the club Fams right there on Main Street. I took my money, I renovated it, and took my chance at having a business. And one of the things that was crime and violence was one of the things that kind of deteriorates the entertainment industry there in South Greenwood. So with our influence, since we've been advocating the Cease Fire Initiative, gun crimes have decreased. Since we've been bringing awareness to this, we haven't had, you know, per se, a lot of things happen. So the young people are listening. So what we want to do is be a partner. And Mr. Jelani is gonna explain the logistics of it. But I heard Senator Jordan say something about 3:00. And I also told Jelani, I said, "That's not gonna fly." But we have to try. And what we mean is the community needs a little healing. They have to, we asked respectively some years ago for an extra hour here in the town. And this is coming from business owners that had open business in the community and we were depending on the public to help us stay afloat. And I think that with these things that Jelani is gonna talk about, it would help the business owners in the entertainment industry in our city. Because all we want to do is make sure we bring about awareness about gun crimes, child abuse, domestic violence aggravated, simple. We don't, we want to advocate against it and put it in the air just like we have all these other initiatives. We want to make, and we don't have one. And by watching crime after crime, senseless killing after senseless killing, I decided to go forth with the Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative. And one of the events that we talked about doing, we talked about the entertainment industry, the entertainment district. And I was glad to see that Ms. Brantley was trying to do some of the same things. But like she said, it's on a state level and we're mostly on a public level. These are some of the things that Greenwood citizens would gravitate to and really appreciate if we were able to put together some things that would make it more feasible for you all to at least give them a try. Because if you're gonna have an entertainment district, we got to have some kind of way to make money. And with the time limits that they have now, it's kind of hard. And so we want to propose and give our help and our assistance to these initiatives. And Mr. Bob is gonna explain more.
All right. I'll get right to the point.
Let me, before you get to the point, Mr. Chairman. What? You, what business are you talking about? She, the young lady has another business downtown. What area, what area are you talking about?
Oh, well, let me get the map here and just show it to you right quick. Our proposal for the entertainment district includes all parts of downtown Greenwood and parts of-
You listed all parts of downtown Greenwood?
Downtown Greenwood and parts of South Greenwood.
Does that include Main Street?
It does. See, so if you look here, the outline, this is Front Street. If y'all can see here.
Yeah.
This is, the blue outline is the outline of our, what we propose to be the entertainment district. This is Front Street. Comes all the way over to Maplewood Street.
Mm-hmm.
You know, runs down along Baptist Town. Young Street and Baptist Town is a part of the entertainment district. Come on down, borders down, back up to Lamar Street, comes back down Carrollton, and it goes all the way down to up by Dixielane Alley. Comes back across where Jackson Street is, Palace Street, and comes back up Cotton. And it also has where Webster's is. So it includes pretty much the entire business district of the whole downtown Greenwood, this side and that side.
So what's, what's the difference? Y'all covering the same territory?
No, almost the same.
Almost the same. A large area, what she's talking about, the Main Street. And your kind of entertainment would be what?
Pretty much the same blues and, you know, all the same type of things, whatever. If I can go ahead and get to it, I can, I can explain it right to you. All right. To give you an idea of what we're talking about when we say entertainment district, think of it as a beer or Bourbon Street type flavor. A place where adults are allowed to walk freely in a certain area with their alcoholic beverage as long as it's in the cup. In a certain area, in a sectioned off designated area, which I also have designated on here for my idea which would be those areas. Would be Howard Street and Main Street. These would be the designated areas where people would be able to walk around freely with their alcoholic beverages in their cup and not to leave outside of this area. And, you know, all must be adults.
May I ask a question? Does that include Keltown Avenue and Johnson Street?
Oh, what, you're talking about designated area?
Right.
No, sir, this is Howard, it comes down to Johnson right here. And then you know where Mr. left on Johnson, and then it comes to Main.
Left on Johnson?
Yes, sir, and this is Main. Like those are the different intersecting streets, Palace, Gibbs, Henry Street. This is Main, this is Johnson here, and this is Howard. And this is the designated area for where people would be allowed to walk from venue to venue, business to business, watching different types of bands and with their beverage in their hand as long as it's in the cup. And then we have to stay within these boundaries while doing it.
I think, I think that probably need to be modified.
Oh, I mean, it can, most definitely, most definitely.
As I said, we're ready to critique whatever. And I also said in our private meeting, that's gonna stick out. That couple, that couple of alcohol walking around gonna stick out. Just picture a vision with a festival type atmosphere.
Right, like a river to the rails.
This is, this is the type of atmosphere we're trying to provide. And we want to make sure that we get the input from you all to have this, to help us with this vision and critique it as such.
I'm very familiar with Bill Street and Bourbon Street. That's why I was suggesting that Johnson and Keltown Avenue should probably be included in that.
Yeah, most definitely. Most definitely, hey. Most definitely, whatever we can-
That's gonna be kind of restrictive, right?
Well, yeah, it is, it is.
You'll be walking mad land.
Right, right, right. Which is why, you know, I was just biting off a little bit, you know, I didn't want to jump too far out, so that's a great, we can most definitely do that. Business owners have no curfew on when to close business. Only when not to sell alcohol, liquor, or like substances. Which if you look in your packet, which I gave you, there is an ordinance of the city that speaks to that, which says you must not sell alcoholic beverage or liquor between a certain time. Nowhere in our city ordinance or state code does it say a business owner has to close their business. They just have to stop serving alcohol. They have to close their bar. They can remain open as long as they need to. Now, the one thing with the curfew is not for just the entertainment. It's not just for people to enjoy themselves. This is a great benefactor to the entertainment venues who charge cover charges. The more, the more time they have to stay open, the more cover charge they can collect. And this is, most people in that type of business, it's their livelihood. It's how they feed their families, it's how they send their children to school. You know, most of these people might not have the type of education or this, that, this, that. But they are good citizens trying to make good money to feed their families. An extended curfew would be exuberant. I mean, it would do so much for business owners who charge cover charges who are able to allow people to come in. People are allowed to walk freely and congregate until a certain time on the outside of the area. Properly protected by law enforcement, the city must invest fully into the district because of its profitability. It brings in so much revenue in a small amount of time. Now, what we have proposed here is an avenue by which many purposes can be served. Two of the main purposes being our lack and loss of businesses here and our crime and violence problems. In order to address these problems, people must be provided with an opportunity to enjoy themselves and to create revenue for themselves. This proposal provides for both. Again, if you do have your packet, you can go to the page where it says ordinances for the entertainment district. It goes back to the curfew, again, the 3:00 AM curfew is for the entertainment district itself, meaning the outside area, meaning all the parts of the designated area. At 3:00 AM, this area closes. And people either have to go into an open establishment or go home. But at 3:00 AM, you have to leave this area. We will have, again, the particular area was called a free zone. That's what we would call the designated area where they're allowed to drink. It'd be a free zone where by persons 21 or older would be able to walk in public while drinking alcoholic beverages. Designated streets would be Howard or whatever we are choosing to be. These streets will also be barricaded and all traffic up and down the streets will be blocked off. If you see here, I have X's. Those stand for barricades. Where the barricades would be so that people would be allowed to walk fluently, you know, through the middle of the street. Oh, sorry about that, Bob. Also, this creates a way for bands, if you see I have bands here. This creates a way for us to allow local talent to be promoted. People can come out, play bank, play music on the side of the street. Also vendors, we can have vendors out selling, selling their goods, selling this, selling that. That's revenue for the city because those vendors have to buy permits to do that. See, so this provides a way for people to enjoy themselves and also for the average common person with a side hustle or some type of idea to come out and try it with the right type of clientele. To make, all right, coming on down to our fines. We have, I told you about ceasing the floor traffic. Also impose a $1,000 cash bond for all persons engaging in crimes pertaining to assault, threatening, disturbing the peace, or any other acts of misdemeanor violence. Which means anyone who is in this area, in the entertainment district anywhere, who is in these people's businesses or on these people's property, causing problems, acting a fool, doing things that's gonna deter people from coming away, they will be arrested and charged $1,000 cash bond to get out. Because we will have a zero tolerance policy for violence and fighting. Because that takes business away. You can't get foreigners coming in from England and Japan and Ireland seeing people fighting, acting a fool in the streets, they'll leave. So there's a zero tolerance for that. Also, not allow any person to enter the designated area and decently exposing themselves. Which means no wearing of pants or dresses below the waist area as to expose underwear. Or even to go as far, I mean, or even to go as far to say that you can't even go in the establishments. The venues in the entertainment district showing your underwear. No, zero tolerance policy. We want to induce an environment where people feel comfortable, where all people feel comfortable. Everybody doesn't feel comfortable looking at someone's underwear. So we want to induce an environment where people can feel comfortable. Have live bands playing on streets and sidewalks at all times, from 8:00 to 12:00, from 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Bands strategically placed in different parts of the designated area for people to sit down, listen to, and enjoy. Have free parking on all streets that are not designated for traffic or that's private property. Have at least one officer, maybe two stationed at each checkpoint. As you see, I have on here checkpoints to enter the designated area where people will be ID'd. Because after a certain time, as I get to, you will have to have an ID to get into the designated area because of the drinking. These entry points are here, Howard, Howard in front, Howard in the church, and Howard in Johnson. And also for Main Street, it would be Main and Gibbs and Main and Johnson. Those entry points will have at least one to two officers or security personnel, whoever's stationed there to check IDs and dress code.
I want to reiterate that all of the, all of this whole vision, my vision is for it to be on a trial basis, to happen once a month. What I mean by once a month, that'll be that day, that weekend, that business owners try to get out of the red and get into the black. It would be like Black Friday. Once a month, extended curfew with all these things in place, with you all's blessing, with you all's participation and ideas. And along with, keep in mind, this is just a rough draft. This is just a vision that we're trying to do. It can be critiqued at any time. And it helps all involved.
Right.
We want to, we want to make Greenwood an attractive area again on both sides of the track. We're left to, on our side of the track, we don't have different festivals or we have our separate block parties here and there. But we want to make a big, you know, we want to make sure we have a day where everybody's looking forward to it. And we want to create that kind of atmosphere. And we want to keep up with whether we're affecting our crime or not.
All right, and to continue, so we can finish.
May I say something? Let me say something, Mr. President. Let me say, I understand what you're all trying to do. And let me speak to my generation. Years ago, we had a hotel here. We had a lounge in there. And we had a place to go. Every weekend, after we came out of the movie, we'd go to the Plaza Hotel every weekend, through the week as well. And it was our entertainment. But your ideals are good. I don't, I don't want to think I'm against entertainment, I'm not. But I want to see it in a way that there won't be any bloodshed in all of this. But I like the young, y'all got ideals of trying to improve the community. Because in my generation, we had those things.
Right.
And that's been a long, long time ago.
We don't have all that.
And you don't have any place, I look at Greenwood, you don't have a decent anything. We had everything that we had.
And that's pretty much the whole focus, Senator, is to get people better used.
Yeah, let me finish. But I want safety.
Right.
I don't, I don't want to see brothers and sisters in the streets after 12 o'clock shooting at everybody. And I don't, and I don't think the town would tolerate that. But you come up with some ideals that will work. It's what people can entertain themselves. Personally, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
But I, you know, I won't be there, but I don't have a problem. You enjoy yourself because it happened in my generation with me.
Let me reassure you that safety is-
That's the bottom line, is safety.
Yes, sir. And safety is the key to this plan working. It can, no one can benefit from this if it's not, if safety is not the key and if safety is not strictly enforced. That's why I made a point to say zero tolerance on these type of things. The proper police protection is key in doing this, which means, which is why the city itself, the local government, has to totally invest into this idea. Because we have to totally put our eggs in that basket. It has to be protected. No one's gonna make money if it's not protected. And just to move on to some of the-
That's, excuse me, but that's where the Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative comes in. Our whole message is we want PSAs against all these things. We don't have not one billboard that says, "Don't do it." But we have several that says, "Don't do other things." But we want to make sure we're addressing and letting the people know that we're trying to get those things for you all through the Mississippi Delta Cease Fire Initiative. So that when they come out, they'll know they're supporting the whole idea of staying out of trouble.
You said earlier that there would be no closing. I mean, is there, is there a 3:00 AM closing?
Oh, that's, that's-
That's, yeah, the 3:00 AM would be for like the entertainment, this area right here. At 3:00 AM, you would have to leave out of the outside area and either go into an establishment or go home. But 3:00 AM is the closing time for the district. It means the barricade will be removed, traffic, traffic will be able to flow back through. And people will either have to go inside somewhere that's open or go home. But no more congregating outside, no more standing outside, standing around after 3:00 AM. But like Senator Jordan said, the key to this is the safety and protection. Which means that the officers or people from the organization would have to be there, which we all have outlined.
Being, being that the curfew has been 1:00 for so long, 2:00 would suffice. This is just a rough draft. But I would like to see businesses, I would like to have seen it when I had one. But I would like to see them get an extra hour even so they can be in conjunction with the county. I don't see no reason why, you know, the county should be able to get more revenue. And they're gonna leave the city going into the county when that money would stay in the city if they were allowed to be able to stay there. So I just think it'd be nice.
And in closing, we want to go ahead and finish up. I want you all to look at the budget I just gave you. These are some projected revenues and expenses for this project. Because what I'm asking the city to do is, I'm asking the city to adopt this policy. And in adopting this policy, you will have to, there's, like I said, there's an investment that's gonna have to be made, some changes that's gonna have to be made, maybe even, well, even an entire department established. But we're gonna go to the expenses first, entertainment district projected expenses. In order to, in order for this to come to fruition with how I planned it out with the number of officers and what it would take for police officers, for the extra work for this, for the number of officers, it would be an extra $90,000 on the city. For part-time workers, for cleanup and different things like that during this time period, it would be an extra $98,000 for the city. Now, this is three nights a week, three nights a week, every weekend. These people working, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, every weekend, all right? For a director, because again, in order for this to work, you have to have somebody running this, somebody who's gonna take it, somebody who has the vision to make it work. So the city would have to establish an entire department for this. For a director, we averaged out it with fringe benefits and everything, $42,000. A budget for the entertainment district, $35,000. And just for heaven's sakes, miscellaneous, just to add in to go to either one of those categories, an extra $85,000, bringing the total expenses to $350,000 on the city every year to make this happen. Now, let's look at the projected revenue that the city stands on making off of this. If we can get 1,000 extra people to come into the city on each night and spend $100, that's $100,000 per night gross revenue for different businesses. If 1,000 people come in extra and spend $100, over a weekend or three night period, that's $300,000 in gross revenue for all the businesses. That's an extra $300,000 we just brought into the city. Over a year period, it's 15,500, I mean, $15,600,000 of gross revenue that was brought into the city. Now, the sales taxes off that is $1,092,000. The city's cut, which is 18% or 5%, would be $202,000. And that's just off sales taxes. That's not off the permits that the people have to make to get on here. That's not off the sales taxes that the business owners are gonna spend getting more product. That's not off the sales taxes that the employees are gonna spend after they get paid. Go to the next projection. If we can get 2,000 people to come in and spend $2,000 a night, $400,000 a night, $1.2 million a weekend, $62,400,000 as gross revenue, that's business, that's money brought into the city of a gross, $62 million brought into the city on a year. The sales tax for that is $4 million. The city's cut is $800,000. So basically what I'm saying is, with this budget, well, with this project, it's all about what we put into it. Whatever we put into it, we put the proper advertisement into it, if the city totally invests in it, we could be, we could be the stopping point between where Bill Street and Bourbon meets. We could be the heartbeat of the Mississippi Delta. I just want to list a few incentives for the city. More business being conducted, more food being sold, more drinks, more merchandise. This is profitable through sales tax, permits, and et cetera. An influx of people. They come in for one reason, fall in love with another one. With this draw, all types of people will come in. They will see businesses, they will want to start businesses. They will open businesses. Influx of new businesses open, more exposure, it promoted correctly, more spending from within the city and without, a decrease in late-night criminal activity and marketability, a new selling point for the CVB. So we don't want to take up too much time. The director, I mean, the board member, told me I had to go. But again, we would like to come back also when other members are here. You know, give you all time to think about this, sit on it. If need be, we come and talk to you about it. But this is essential, not just for the entertainment aspect, Senator Jordan, but for the business aspect, especially for business owners in South Greenwood. Especially for-
Mr. Bob, Mr. Pearson. Listening to you all and along with Ms. Knight, is it possible that you all could get together, since you all both are talking about entertainment, could you all get together, maybe share some of your ideas together and see where that possibly could lead, this entire entertainment thing too? Because working together, I think, would make a lot of difference.
Yeah.
And it would make a difference.
Yes, yeah. I've actually already sat down and talked with Ms. Knight. And Ms. Knight has told me that this is a great idea and that she would be in support of it if we could get the city to support it. And so that way, we could all come down, like you said, we could come together and have one proposal with two different aspects, all under one proposal, and everybody benefiting off of the new business owners coming in and business owners who are right here, right now, along with the city and along with the people.
My main motivation is Mississippi Delta Cease Fire. I want to make sure that our citizens continue to act in a decent manner so that we can get industry here, so that we can get some of these things accomplished that they say we can't get accomplished because of the behavior of the surrounding community. So once we get our act together, I feel like that'll open the door for industry to come and it'll open the door for our citizens to gain more trust. And they also need something to feel good about. They need to get our punishment, I like to say. Because our citizens have been on punishment here for a little while now. And I think that with the message out there and with the proper leadership behind us, whatever message that we're going out there to say, I think they will follow. And I think they appreciate it. And I appreciate y'all's respect for their listening to us today.
I also just wanted to tell you that we have signed letters from local business owners in the district who also support this and say that this would be a great idea.
My question is, how many business owners in that area right there are we talking about that already have some entertainment?
Okay, well, we have, we have the main attraction here on, here on Main Street. You also have Memphis Style Wings, that offers entertainment. You also have, well, Miss Nigga's, but that's outside of this right here, but it's still inside the entertainment district. You also have our Olas over here on the other side, supervise some type of music. Mr. Hoover, he has a spot right there on Main Street, right here in this area. And then, you know, coming over to Howard Street, you know, we have the Louvian. And we have other places.[1794.66] But the main draw with the music, we could have bands. We could put bands on the street in different places and that could substitute for the lack of actual establishments we have until we can draw those in. And those can be drawn in with just the proper going out and getting. This would be a great selling point to businesses, businesses who are already established themselves in entertainment to come here as a blank slate. And they could make, you know, we could make Howard Street, like I said, the next big thing, say sliced bread, Howard and Main Street. As you see, I have here Howard to Main, where Bill Street and Bourbon Street meets.
And you also have businesses that are traditionally open, like Johnson's Fish Market.
Right, that could benefit.
You got Spoonie Mayfield rejuvenating, decide he wants to get out and sell some barbecue. You got the area over there where you set up the farmer's market, where vendors can get right there and sell their goods and take advantage of the opportunities that the town is open a little later. And like I said, my vision is for it to happen once a month. So we can break them numbers down, I think, I know once a month is doable. I know once a month is doable and on a trial basis to gain you all's trust and get the public to buy into it. I think with a little critiquing from you all, I think it should be something that needs to be moved forward on. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.